Go ahead, sir. You may start the meeting now.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Monday. Hope you all had a good weekend. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Chris, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you. Could you do the roll call, please?
I certainly can. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann? And Mr. Lennox is out of town this week. All our present sir. Sir. Excuse me, we're gonna put the meeting on hold for just one second. We've lost the mayor. Hold on.
Are you nice? Okay, just don't worry about it. Same pledge to lead us to the flag, please, please rise. Today, we're gonna talk about Chaplain Park and Cross Island, Cross Island Park. Taylor, you're gonna kick the meeting off?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good morning, Mayor McCann and Council, and all of our Parks and Rec community and supporters who are tuning in. I am Taylor Lad, project planner for the Town's Capital Projects Division, and lead for the Chaplain Community Park and Crossings Park redevelopment project. I'm really excited to join you all today to officially kick off this project that has been several years in the making. I want to thank Council especially for making parks and recreation a priority for our community, and specifically to thank you for making this project possible this fiscal year. Chaplain Community Park and Crossings Parks are two parks that have served our community very well for many years. But now it's time to invest in refreshing them and expanding their offerings to meet the needs of today and tomorrow's best-in-class park system for our island. For this workshop, we have joining us our consulting design team led by Wooden Partners with Design Workshop. So with that, I will turn it over to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Taylor. And we're excited also to kick off the project today and get things rolling. And we really appreciate the time and effort. I know it's been a little crazy the last few days with things changing with COVID, but we really appreciate everybody joining us this morning. And your participation is gonna be critical to making sure that this is a successful project because we want to make sure that our parks reflect the community, and your input is critical to that. In terms of our agenda?
Share our screen.
Thank you. I'm going to the agenda sheet. Just an overview of where we're going. Today, we'll introduce our team. We'll talk about the work that has led up to today's meeting and kickoff. We'll look at project milestones and schedule, tentative schedule. We'll share a little bit of background information on each site. And then we will wrap up with input from y'all. And Mayor, because we're discussing two parks, what we'd like to do is give a little bit of background about, for example, the Crossings Park, and then turn it over to you. And when the time comes, we'll obviously let you know, but turn it over to you to solicit input from Council. And then we'll take the floor back and discuss Chaplain Park, and then solicit input as well. And I understand there is no public input today, so we will wrap up at that point. A little bit of a background on our team. I'm Kyle Theodore with Wooden Partners. We are the prime consultant, and I will be the main point of contact for this project. Also with me today is Trey Griffin, who is a senior project manager here at Wooden Partners. And our project team is a reassembly of individuals that worked on Low Country Celebration Park together. So we're not, you know, assembled specifically for this project. We've all worked together as a team before with one critical addition, and that is Design Workshop, who will be acting as our design advisor. And they will bring a national perspective to the project, having completed many public projects and parks throughout the country internationally, as a matter of fact. And with us today is Kirk Culberson, the chairman and CEO of Design Workshop, as well as Glenn Walters, a principal with Design Workshop. Some of you may already know them because not only are they bringing their national expertise to the project, but they're familiar with our community, having completed facilitation of the Town's Circle to Circle project a few years ago. Also part of our team, but not with us today, will be Thomas and Hutton Engineering, Scott Munson, who's responsible for civil engineering and stormwater management, Jean Bell with Watson Tate Savory, who's responsible for architecture, and Asher Howell with Newkirk Environmental Consultants. He will be providing environmental consulting. I'd like to just take a couple minutes to talk about the foundation that was laid and that has brought us to this point, beginning with Los Designs' Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was adopted in October of 2020. It addressed current gaps and then looked at long-range needs over the next 10 years. It included a pretty significant amount of community input, and so that was sort of a beginning step. It was then built on in Part Two, where that Los information for Parks and Recreation became critical to that section of our plan that is specific to Parks and Recreation. And that included additional community input and resulted in a list of action items for implementation. That kind of brought us to where we are today, which is Part Three, building on Parts One and Two. Staff has also facilitated some additional public input through open house, live polling, an online questionnaire that was housed on the town website, and ended with a proposed program for each of the two parks, a separate program for each of the two parks. And our goal today in meeting with you is to validate the programs for each of those two park sites and to solicit your input on what the priorities are for each of those two parks. And just looking out into the future, Part Four will be implementation of the proposed master plans once we have finished our work. Our planning will take us into early 2022, beginning with kickoff meetings that I, we're starting with you today. We will also be conducting site visits in addition to the community input that's going to be taking place. And we will be meeting with focus groups later today. We will be meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission about this time tomorrow. This evening at six o'clock, we are having an open house at Chaplain Park to solicit additional information from the general public. And then tomorrow, we will be making site visits with the new town manager and any interested staff to get our folks more familiar with the existing conditions. We will also be then taking that information and distilling it to see what facilities will fit in each of the two parks. You know, we're dealing with a finite amount of high ground, and there's a lot of program elements that are being considered, and we want to make sure we know what fits and what doesn't fit because we will then be having a collaboration meeting or conference call with the Mid-Island Team to ensure that what they are doing is going to congeal with what we're doing, and we're not operating in vacuums. We want to make sure that nothing's slipping through the cracks and that, for example, if something doesn't fit on their site but couldn't fit on our site, that we're discussing that. We'll then prepare preliminary concept plans and come back before the same groups that we're meeting with today and tomorrow to present those plans and solicit input. And then based on what we hear, we'll be preparing final plans that, again, are then brought back before you, the Parks and Rec Commission, and hopefully endorsed by both groups on the back end of the project. We anticipate that that being completed, as I said earlier, sometime in early 2022. So now, to sort of the meat and potatoes of today's meeting, we wanted to discuss the characteristics of each park and then discuss the proposed program that will lead up to a request for additional input from you. And we're gonna start with Crossings Park, which is approximately 56 acres in size. There is a significant amount of the Crossings Park parcel, which have been deemed wetlands and delineated by the Corps of Engineers. There's about 34 acres of existing wetlands. And so that leaves about a little over 22 acres of upland that we have to work with. Something I do want to mention about the wetlands, and we're working with staff and the town attorney to get more clarity on, those wetlands were set aside during the construction of the Park Island, Cross Island Parkway, excuse me. And as such, they have restrictive covenants that were placed on them. We're working with staff and town attorney to find out what, if anything, can occur within those wetlands based on those restrictions. Also at the park, there's existing a little over 200 parking spaces that exist. As we move forward with planning, we will be taking into consideration a number of factors, things like specimen trees and significant trees, possible impacts of, as I just mentioned, those restrictive covenants on the wetlands, stormwater management and how it may affect the site, making sure that any open space and trail connections are made to surrounding properties. We'll be looking at sun angles for fields and sports courts. And we also don't want to focus solely on athletics and recreation, but we also want to make sure that our final solution creates public spaces that are worthy and representative of our island. What is at Crossings Park before we start discussing the program? Right now, there are three ballfields with a central restroom and concession building. There's a batting cage pavilion, a large regulation-sized soccer field, and then an open playfield and meadow area that can be used for pickup practices and whatnot. There is a playground, shelter with restrooms. And then outside our study area is the Bristol Sports Facility, which consists of a skate park and roller hockey arena, as well as trails. And we'll be networking our trail connections and making sure we have recognized those connections that are needed to Bristol Sports. But beyond that, we'll be looking at the greater area and making sure that we're tying to the trails network.
So as Kyle said, what we would like to do this morning is to validate the park program and identify priorities from the input and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the additional community input from our plan. The proposed program for Crossing Park is, as you see here, which is to consolidate all the ballfields at this park, to redevelop the existing fields, the restroom concession building and plaza, to add two new 300-foot ballfields, expand the parking to support this new program, and develop new amenities such as a dog park, splash pad, an ADA accessible playground, pathways to connect all of these elements together, and to add a comprehensive irrigation system. With that, I think we could open it up for comments that you may have relative to this proposed program. Is this the program we feel like we should move forward with? Are there any modifications you would, or additions you would like to see, understanding the constraints on the land as Kyle outlined?
Mr. Brown? Alex?
Time to work the mute button there. Good morning. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation and the team for getting us started here. I actually just have two questions. You mentioned that we're going to exclude the Bristol area with the skate park, I guess some trails, and maybe some basketball courts there also. A particular reason why we're excluding that piece?
No, we'd be happy to include it, and we want to make sure, obviously, that all the critical connections are made that are necessary so that it's tied into the network of the trails in the area. I think in terms of redevelopment, I believe the skate park could use a little polishing. But that's why we're, that's why we're here today, is to find out priority-wise what you'd like to see us pursue.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not the expert in that park, and as you mentioned, you're going to be meeting with stakeholders here shortly. I know that there's activity around roller hockey and that sort of thing in that area. And I, for one, agree that if there's wear and tear or there's an opportunity to improve, we don't, we don't leave it out. That was my first one. And the second one, you mentioned the irrigation. And you also mentioned, and in the vein of comprehensive irrigation, so I guess my question is, are we currently being irrigated at all? It's just not suffice? Can we give any details on that?
I do know that the sports fields are irrigated. That was, that recommendation for irrigation came from the foundation work that was done previously, the Los and our plan work. So beyond the sports fields, I can't answer that, and that would be something we'd be looking at as we move forward with the project.
Got it. Okay, I'm sure you'll learn a lot more as we engage with the stakeholders and the community. I'm just happy that we're moving forward with this exercise. So that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So, August?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. One, if you were to create a scale of one to five, five being in perfect condition, just off the top of your head, how would you rate the overall condition of this park as you look at it today?
Oh, gosh. I would say probably a three. I think that the bones of the park are good, but it's just aged. It's been used like crazy, and I think it's 20-plus years old. It's just time to reinvest and polish it up. I really think, you know, that's sort of what the focus is. However, the planning work that has taken place previously suggests the addition of two new 300-foot ballfields. Those additions would then consume existing fields, specifically soccer and/or the meadow area. And so from a priority standpoint, we're hoping to learn more today and tomorrow about what those priorities are for Crossings Park.
Thank you. And the other, you may not be able to answer, but I recall a conversation with Steve Riley, I would say maybe some 18 months ago, where he was sharing the possibility of a developer coming in, in the general area, putting up a fairly high-class hotel. And that hotel would have a dual purpose. One is for people coming to Hilton Head for a weekend or a week, but also to add to some connectivity with the Fusky Island for people that are coming maybe late in the day, spend an overnight, and then get on the ferry to the Fusky in the morning. Where I'm going with this wandering conversation is, is there, are you aware of any adjacent commercial development plans that are maybe in a early stage of consideration that directly or indirectly may impact this area?
We have not been made aware of that. That's something we can discuss with staff and sort of get brought up to speed on. We're just getting going with our input, and so that's good information that we can follow up on and see if we can garner some information from staff.
Thank you. That's all I have now. Thank you.
Chris Ames?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It's good to see the design workshop back in our neighborhood. My impression is that this is going to be an active recreation park with a heavy emphasis on ballfields. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Secondly, are the new ballfields for adults, or are they restricted to youth baseball? Is softball included?
They can be designed such that they are flexible in their use, but if you would like to see something that's specifically geared to a particular age group, that's why we're soliciting your input today.
Yeah, I'm certainly not an expert in this area, and I would have to rely on the people in the Parks and Recreation Commission for their input and whatever the master plan indicated. But I was just curious because we have adults on the island who probably want to play softball or baseball as well. So that's why I raised that question. There, right now, there are areas where individuals can go and exercise and so on. Will there be an opportunity, park course, course, or any kind of activity that individuals will be able to take advantage of in the park?
We absolutely can. Is that something you'd like to see developed there?
Well, I think it's important that we don't have a park that excludes individuals to the extent that we can accommodate them. Again, though, I'm not the expert in this. I'm just giving you a reaction or a question. And then I would agree with Alex's comment about the hockey. Those facilities are tired, and I think the question is, do they justify capital investment to bring them up to snuff? Is there still demand for those activities? I think they're popular, but I just don't know if they rise to the priority of capital investment and renovation. So those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to begin working on this project with y'all. Super excited. I have several questions that are kind of all over my paper, so I'm going to jump in and I may crisscross back and forth. But just picking up, I guess, where David left off with regard to the skate park area. In terms of whether or not they're still popular, I can ask, answer that question from my family's perspective. With having grandsons who are surfers and skateboarders, they're very popular, and I think that when they are here to visit, I'm sure there are lots of other children on the island too, who would like to see a refreshed and updated area for those types of activities right here at home. Secondly, in terms of the ballparks, we, we, I don't know. It'd be interesting to hear from the Parks and Rec Commission in terms of how often they've create, tried to create a softball youth league, but having girls who played from the time they were six through college. I think it's a sport that has many benefits. The boys have baseball. I'd like to see, frankly, something here developed for girls and softball. And leading into that would be still my belief that sports tourism is something that we should be thinking forward to. And so with the redesign of the fields, keeping them, keeping in mind tournaments and families who come here for not only a game, but a weekend and a week of games, having traveled all over the country and outside the country, playing with these, watching these kids play, the best experiences for families are those moments when they travel together and are sitting on the ballfields. So I would encourage us to think forward in terms of its planning with that in mind. I also know that there have been some questions, concerns, desires for more of a temporary type of setup, maybe, where we don't necessarily need an entire football field perhaps, but opportunities for football-type uprights. I think it does a number of things. It gives another outlet in terms of a sports where a child may develop their skills, but they need a practice place as well, coaching. It's an opportunity for children to learn and to grow, and I would encourage us to do that. Let's see. If I've hit everything that was on my list here, I think I have. I'm interested in making sure overall, when y'all, when the design comes out, that we haven't, I know there was, there's a section on there about making sure that we've looked at significant trees and such. And what I would not want to see ultimately is that we incorporate many wonderful opportunities and sacrifice those trees in favor of parking lots. So I realize parking is always critical, and you need to be able to put put your vehicle somewhere when you're coming out. But if we can not cut down trees and make barren spaces with rows of parking, that would be my desire. So I think I've contributed what I have right now, but I look forward to hearing more, learning more, and participating. Thank you.
Mr. Stanford?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Kyle, I'm impressed with the team that you have again assembled, and I would comment that as the designers of Crossings Park, you have created a very high standard of quality and excellence. And we fully expect that that standard continue on into these two projects as well. I'm not sure I understand what consolidate all ballfields means.
I believe the intent there, Glenn, was to make it sort of the destination of ballfield area of the island. If the three existing fields are redeveloped and brought up to snuff, and then these two possible 300-foot ballfields are added, in addition to that, you end up with, you know, if you will, a concentration of baseball at that particular facility, and I think that's what that, what that recommendation was getting at.
Okay, that makes good sense to me, to do that consolidation. Frankly, I look at crossings as principally an active sports, an active park. And of course, I'll look at Mid-Island, hopefully, as principally a passive park. And Chaplain would fall somewhere in between those. I know we're gonna talk about Chaplain in a few minutes. Do I understand you to say that the meadow is to be redesigned as two new ballfields?
We haven't begun to study on paper yet. That's our next step. We're trying to sort of ferret through and make sure we're clear on the program, and then we'll start applying the program to the site. But yes, looking at the park to add two new ballfields there, something has to be displaced. But yes, looking at the park to add two new ball fields there, something has to be displaced. And so whether it's the meadow or the existing soccer field or both, you know, by the time you accommodate additional parking needs to serve those two new ball fields, that would be a possibility.
Thank you. So that's yet to be determined, I guess, is the final answer on that. And that's fine. This is a very early stage. I'm wondering, Taylor, do we have census data on the use of the various facilities around, particularly having to do with Crossings Park?
No, sir, not specifically numbers-wise. Anecdotally, we do, just from speaking with folks who are in the neighborhood, folks who live nearby and use it, and just from observations during this whole community input process and the feedback we've gotten from folks. But part of that, we do know that a lot of the neighboring residences in Point Comfort area and Hig Point and over in the, over by the Marina, all those areas, Brighton Bay, folks do use that park. And one of Loz's recommendations was to not only consolidate the ball fields there, but also to add some amenities to expand its functionality as a community park as well. So yes, it will be heavily on the side of active recreation for ball fields, but the things like the adaptive playground or a splash pad or smaller dog, smaller scale dog park and the trails would be the things that would kind of broaden the scale of Crossing's Park to be used for the community because we do know that residential residences and even some of the visitors to the area do use it.
Yeah, this is going to be a difficult balancing act to work all of these features in. Moving over to the skate bicycle arena there, that to me is, in its current condition, below the standards that we want to have applied to our facilities here at the town. And if, in fact, it is actively used, I'm ignorant of that, but if, in fact, it is actively used, I think it should be included in the scale of the redevelopment of Crossings Park. So I think those are my questions at this point. Well, you talk about reserving public spaces there. There, I think about something like the meadow. Again, getting back to my question about census or numbers of people that are using that. I frankly haven't seen many people out there using the meadow, and it looks to me like a, an opportunity for us to expand this active park, ball field concept that we keep hearing is, is a demand here. It'll be very interesting finally to hear what the legal advice is about the covenants and restrictions are on the wetlands. We're all sensitive to protecting those, but if somehow this property is, for lack of a better term, overprotected, maybe it's something that we can take a look at. So I look forward to further reports and input from the team. And so I appreciate your efforts here, and I look forward to a major redevelopment and major improvement in Crossing's Park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, may I? I have one further question.
Good, David.
Thank you. Kyle, what is, in your concept, a splash pad in this particular area?
It is typically defined as an unmanned or unstaffed opportunity for water play. It is, you know, not deep water. It is, it is the equivalent of what is currently at the Caligny Beach Park access. At the end of the circle.
In and of itself, it's not a destination activity. It's an enhancement of the area. Is that accurate?
It could, it could be a destination activity.
That's a, that's a different dimension. That's why I asked the question. I don't know who, what stakeholders you're trying to bring into the park with a splash pad. But again, I'm open to the idea. I, I think that kind of activity makes a lot of sense. But I am interpreting more of a, an adjunct activity to the ball fields and everything else that's going on there. And I'll, I'll mention more about that when we start talking about Chaplain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments on Crossing's Park? And if not, we'll move on to Chaplain Park.
So I'll talk a little bit about crossings again. I'll try griffin with wooden partners. Just to make sure everybody understands too, we've, we've had some dialogue with staff already as it relates to what has happened in the past on the Chaplain Linear Park. We know there's a lot of work invested in that and that there are some key elements to it that we'll, we'll take into consideration as we start looking at Chaplain itself, primarily sort of the connections across 278 and making sure that we get good pedestrian and bike connections down to the Perk Speed Beach Access Area. And then some of the connections that might occur in between. When we look at Chaplain, we're similar in size, not including sort of the OCRM beach portion of the park. It's about a 60-acre park with a couple acres of ponds on there. So we're somewhere in the 57 and a half acres of upland to work with. There are obviously lots of existing parking spaces between the park proper and then the sort of overflow parking lot on Cass Net that we can incorporate as we kind of look into what program elements might be developed. Just as Kyle mentioned with crossings, there's a lot of considerations taken into play when we look at significant specimen trees. There are a handful of pretty significant trees on this site, particularly as you get towards the 278, sort of southwest corner, and then a little bit up towards the beach area. We, we know we'll have to deal with stormwater management and some of the existing ponds and how they'll fold into development as sort of tie into the, the linear park. We know that trail connectivity is, is going to be critical here. Parking for beach, Perk Speed Beach Access obviously is a hot topic, and we'll, we'll need to discuss that a little bit more. Same thing with the viability of Cass Net Drive parking. In this one, there's going to be some more sport court related programs that have been proposed. So sun angles are very important to get the court orientations correct. And then as Kyle mentioned with crossings, the creation of the public spaces for gathering and interpretation and celebration as you tie into the, the linear park and all the special wetland and, and natural environments here. So those will all factor into sort of the development of this. The existing information or programs that are currently out there. Fairly large open play fields. It's about 750 by 360, which is essentially the equivalent of about three soccer fields. Full-size soccer fields. There's also a 400 by 375 multipurpose field, which currently has some soccer kind of overlaid along with some, some small diamonds for, for baseball. There's several restroom buildings, a concession stand, a couple basketball courts, a small playground, and then obviously the existing dog park and six existing tennis courts with some trail connections throughout. So all those, you know, are kind of what's there and related to the current open space.
So as with Crossing's Park, we'd like your thoughts on the proposed program. One, the idea of maintaining the natural turf rectangular fields there now for pickup, play, and practice rather than formalized sports field. You're probably aware this park is utilized for debris management in the event of a hurricane, and, and so understanding how that impacts the park operations long-term. Two restaurant buildings and concessions, really the focus of this park becoming sports courts. The addition of 12 tennis courts, 24 pickleball courts. Those are for people in my age demographic, I believe, with pro shop and restrooms, parking to support that program, and then additional amenities. Dog park, splash pad, 80 accessible multi-age playground, and of course pathways to connect those elements together, and then appropriate picnic shelters and pavilions. So how are you feeling about that program? Any, any other comments, concerns, additions?
On the beach, beach parking?
And, and beach parking, of course, being a big issue to sort out with this one as well, beach parking and access.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, I'm here. I got it. Yeah, wow, what, what an opportunity we have here with, with the Chaplain Park. Particularly with it having, having a beach access. I guess I'll start with the, the linear trail. I guess I still don't really have my head wrapped around that as a whole, not just in the Chaplain Park area, but as it meanders from, I guess, Shelter Cove down to potentially the new, I guess, Callier Beach area. So in order for, for us to give sound comments and sound recommendations as we move forward, just like to have a little bit better understanding of that. And that ties into my concern about access. This is a very popular area on the island. With that being said, it is also very dangerous when it comes to accessing the area. That's vehicular or pedestrian. So this, this plan needs to include better, safer access to this, this Chaplain Park. The, the other thought that I had as far as the linear trail is concerned, as I start to see that it's going to somehow connect down to Callier Beach across the folly there. The folly is probably one of the better fishing holes on Hilton Head. When tide's turning, you can catch mullet all day long. I don't want to destroy the opportunity for locals to continue to use this area for fishing and crabbing and that sort of thing. So that component to me needs to be included somewhere, somehow. The, I guess, the need for the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. Know the Island Rec Center tends to always be kind of the starting point. I remember pickleball first made its way to Hilton Head. They took over the basketball courts over at Island Rec Center. And, you know, land is so high now to where you're suggesting 24 of them here. And I'm not by any means opposed to that, but I'm not in favor of us necessarily taking over the basketball courts in this area also because of that. I, I guess you're talking to a former basketball player and also basketball coach. So more and more opportunities for those kids to put a ball in their hand in practice is very important. And I don't want to limit that because of the demand of another sport. The, the splash pad. And I'm going to use the Island Rec Center as an example here also. When that place first opened, we could go swim in the pool anytime we wanted. It now, because of the demand, has a very tight schedule. So the public is not necessarily able to use it to any degree. It's, it's, it's not something where on a Saturday morning, you wake up, you say you want to take your kids down to the pool. That's necessarily available. So the splash pad in my mind is, is a good idea, but I think we're limiting ourselves there. You know, the, the idea of having a pool that residents and visitors to that degree can use, I think is important, and this Chaplain Park, particularly because of the size of it, definitely a place that should be considered. And you've nailed it on the parking. We've got to make better use of what we got over on Cass Net. If there's some way to flip some things around, so that makes better sense. I'm, I'm all for that. So those are, those are my comments. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just really adding or emphasizing some of the things that Alex just shared with us. I think safety and connectivity are really important here. The ability to cross the folly was something that's nice, but to still do it in a way that permits local fishing activity would be important. I would love to see an over-the-road 278 connector to this area. 278 is, gets busier and busier, and unfortunately gets faster and faster. And if we could have a bridge, a bridge area there for bikers and walkers, I think that would be fantastic. Relative to the mention of swimming in the pool, I, I think we should take a look at access and availability with what we currently have primarily at the rec center. And then pivot from that analysis to determine whether we have adequate pool resources or not. But I think that's worth taking a look at. I'm sensing from this that this will be the central point for tennis and pickleball. Just as in our earlier discussion, baseball will be focused at the earlier point of discussion. In, in parking, yes, that, that has to be solved with some land consumption here. And I think that's going to be very important. Those are my comments right now. Thank you.
Chris Ames.
Thank you, Mayor. This is much more than a recreation plan. The area has, is complicated because of its relationship to the beach. The opportunity for the linear park, the conversations around an eco trail. You know, it really begs us as a community to ask a more fundamental question. What is the opportunity for Chaplain Park beyond pure recreation? Is it a place where we want to be bringing people together in ways that are beyond playing pickleball? I, I'm, I'm really struggling in my mind as to whether or not this is a recreation park, recreation that has your fairly typical list of activities, or it has a greater opportunity to create something that is uniquely Hilton Head and brings to that area of And brings to that area of the island an alternative. To colligate a different kind of beach experience. So I'm 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 really wondering what level of activity. We ought to be considering for Chaplain and the linear park. I think this is more than just a park exercise. And so I think it requires a community wide vision to think through. The the kind of activities we want to include in this area. And how those activities reinforce one another and create a new experience on the island. We the the pool idea was mentioned and we discussed the spa a splash pool. In the crossings discussion. I don't think a splash pool in this area is what we're really talking about. But it may be more than just a lap pool. It could be a wave pool depending on what we conceive this area might best become. For the benefit of residents and visitors, so I I think that. We we need to think about this one in a much different way than just making a list. Of recreational activities, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris Baker.
Thank you. Well, this particular park. I have a lot of experience with, it's in my ward, so I have great. Desire to see it be developed in a way that makes sense for the island residents. And our nearby residents. As you know, Chaplain Park is on both sides of the park Singleton Road as well as Burks Beach Road. Bordered by residential homes and families, many of whom are full time. And so what we do here makes a difference to the day in, day out, three hundred and sixty five days a year quality of life, so. Very important park. One of the things that I want to think about. Is there's a there's a document that's been created and I think circulated to everyone. If not, let me know and I'll get you a copy of it. But the Eco Heritage Advisory Coalition have created a system of trails. That come through this particular area at Chaplain Park. Where they've highlighted the fact that there are seven contiguous and distinct ecosystems. And it's important, it's important to the island and to the residents, to our visitors, to the state. That it's protected. And so if you look at some of the previous plans. It discusses some parking options down closer to the beach to be developed. Which I hope at this point we can all agree are a bad idea. And so that parking should not take place there, but that land preserved. With an opportunity for people to not only fish, as Alex has mentioned, but to walk and. Explore and experience those ecological systems that are unique. To this part of South Carolina, but certainly to Hilton Head Island. So I want to make sure that we're focused on that as we discuss this park. Two items, the residence vehicle system. And with regard to those residents going back to that protecting. Enhancing preserving and reestablishing the residential. Aspect of that and so that it doesn't further impinge. On their quality of life, really super important. We're talking, I have do have a question. Before I go there though, it is important to remember that whatever happens here. This is a debris management for storms area and so. Protecting that land so that we have that opportunity for the town should a disaster happen. Is important also. There says on this little paper here, twelve tennis courts and twenty four pickleball courts with a pro shop and restrooms. Is that twelve additional tennis court that courts that are envisioned to the ones that are currently there?
It's my understanding it would be a total of twelve, there are six courts there now.
So an additional six, okay. And then just I realize these are just pictures for conceptual purposes, but. The picture of the pro shop on the top right hands corner is quite large and I'm hoping that's not the scope. Certainly is not the scope that I would want to see on this neighborhood park and keeping in mind. It is a neighborhood park surrounded by residential families, so. Just want to point that out as it's staring me in the face in this presentation. Parking to support the program, just as I mentioned at crossings, the parking. Should not be open and blatant. I realize that the parking situation that we have within the old park needs to be redesigned. This is a unique area that not only supports the park, but also the parking. For the both. Beach at public beach access of access at Burks Beach Road, but also Collier Beach. So using that Cassnet parking lot and developing that more fully. Along with a safe walking trail is probably a smart thing to include in the overall design. I think I heard overall. The discussions on the splash pads. I'm not a huge fan, I you know. They sometimes seem out of place and just. So that's I'm just going to put it aside, not my favorite activity, but. Going back to. The park pavilions there, they used. The concession stand where it currently is and those restroom buildings are misplaced, so I think the redesign. That all functions together will be important, but at this point. Want to make sure that I've just made it as clear as I can possibly make it that we are surrounded by residential neighborhoods. My goal is to provide those residents who. A restoration of the neighborhood that we somehow had lost over the years. With the parking that had taken place on Burks Beach Road that created a very unsafe situation. And that that not be returned and if anything, the landscaping is enhanced. To provide a more safe and neighborhood feel to the overall. Space on that road, I'm sure that I will have more to say, I certainly am going to be watching and participating every step of the way. And so for now, thank you, I appreciate what you're what you're putting together here.
Thank you, Tammy, the mayor has had to leave the meeting. Glenn, if you'd be kind enough to share your thoughts, please.
Yes, thank you. I am excited to see a plan to polish the amenities at this park. I'm hearing the ideas about new features there. Two new features are of particular importance to me. One is the eco trail, which would be going through there and on across. The Mid Island Track and in the other direction going back to Shelter Cove. Our problem, of course, has to do with getting across two seventy eight. I hear the comment about some sort of bridge or elevated structure there. I have no idea what something like that would cost. Obviously, that would be a major improvement to safety and facilitate the use of the trail that much more, so. I I'd love to see what what the realities are about that. I'm afraid we're going to find that it's too expensive, but we should look at it nonetheless. The second major feature that I'm interested in seeing here is the pickleball courts. There is enormous demand, it is the fastest growing sport in the country, I'm told. I'm sure that each of you as our experts is very well aware. Of the demand for pickleball, so I'm glad to see that. I'm glad we got clarity on the fact that we're not talking about twelve new tennis courts, but a total of twelve tennis courts, so that's all excellent. The again, we're discussing a splash pad. I don't know where splash pad comes from in terms of crossings park. Or Chaplain Park, but it's certainly we certainly don't need one at both. And I need some help understanding how this would be and enhancing amenity to either of those parks. In view of our various priorities. Then I hear the discussion about pool, I think. The swimming pool discussion came from council and not from our experts. And it but it makes me think. That we're missing a major sports amenity here on Hilton Head Island and that is an Olympic sized pool. The swim competition can happen in the off season, it can be a really. Bonus addition to sports tourism. That said, it occurs to me that there could be a better site for that. At the site that I can never remember the name, I think it used to be called Hilton Head Park. Between squier squier. Anyway, I think people know what I'm talking about, I'm just not able to come up with a name straight away. There's a lot of land there that is a town owned park, I believe. And that could be an opportunity for the Olympic sized pool sometime in the future. I think that my colleagues here have hit on a number of interesting ideas. And I'm excited to see this actually starting to take some sort of form and I look forward to. Details from each of you as we move forward, yeah, those are my comments at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. My understanding is that we do not have members of the public calling in today. Kyle, great work today, very impressive team. Before closing, would you like to give a summary comment on the process ahead now?
I absolutely would, thank you very much. And our next step will be to continue meetings today and tomorrow. To continue gathering public input into the program will then be, as I mentioned earlier. Applying those program elements to each of the two park sites to see where. What each of those sites can accommodate. And then we'll be interfacing with the Mid Island Track Design Team. To ensure that there's nothing that's falling through the cracks in terms of program elements. Then we'll be coming back to y'all with some preliminary master plans for those parks. And that should occur sometime in, we believe the original schedule was looking at November. So that's where we're headed and 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 when we will be coming back before you.
Thank you, Kyle. As we approach adjournment, are there any last comments members of Town Council would like to make, Tammy, I see your hand up.
Thank you, I was hoping to have this opportunity. I know that Kyle mentioned it, I just want to be very specific. That not only is there this meeting today, but that at one thirty today. There is a there are three one hour focus groups that are both virtual and in person, as I understand. And that tonight at Cassnet Cassnet Parking at the Chaplain Park area. At six o'clock, there's an in person open house and I would encourage. People to come out if they have an interest in what they've heard so far today. And on that, I wanted to mention that we. It would be my thought that we should probably have one of those in person onsite type of opportunities. Closer to the crossings park area as well. So that people would have an opportunity and twice in each of the parks that we're discussing. To come out in person and hear a little bit more, see and discuss their thoughts. So I just wanted to have that opportunity, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Tammy, any other comments from members of council? Hearing none, thank you for all your participation and thank you to the consultants in particular. Is there a motion for adjournment? Second from Tammy, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. We stand adjourned, thank you for again for your participation.